All right, good evening and welcome to the Dexter Community School Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, December 6, 2021. And I will kick it over to hope for our call to order in our roll call. Mr. Albert?
Here.
Mr. Arnold?
Here.
Mrs. Brerly here?
Is this Graydorff?
Here.
Ms. Tangens here? Mr. Lundie?
Here.
Mr. Royar?
Here.
Hi. Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Stoff. Okay, moving on, we'll go to the proposed meeting minutes. We have two today. We have one from November 1st, the November 1st, 2021 meeting, as well as the workshop minutes from 11:15, 2021. I will do the Board of Education approve the minutes from November 1st and November 15th. As mentioned.
I will second.
The approval of the minutes has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, then we will put the into a vote. All those who have approved the meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any of those say nay? Okay. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. I think the Board of Education approved the agenda as presented. The approval of the agenda has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I have a little bit of discussion, and that is, and I know there's no surprises, but I, and I brought it up this long and hard, but I thought that it was, it's important that we had a moment of silence right after this to recognize and to honor the community of Oxford in walking in and seeing our flag half-mas and walking through and seeing the names and the pictures of our students, you know, on their lockers. You just think it's so important. It's every time there is violence in schools, it is important to discuss, and I just think that especially because it's so close to our community, although anytime anything happens in school, it's close to our hearts and our community, I just wanted to reflect and have a moment of silence. So I just wanted to add that to the agenda. Would you be open to adding?
I do. I will. I believe the Board of Education approved the agenda as presented.
All those in favor of the amendment and the approval, to be approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any of those say nay? Okay, so typically a moment of silence is a minute, and I just thought maybe just to do it now before we move on to the school presentation. So please just take this moment of silence to reflect and to think about those who we lost. Okay, thank you. A moment of silence. We'll move on to our school presentations, which includes new course proposals.
So we have Ken Keg and Ryan Brewer, Molly Sharp, I think Ken's thinking, new course proposals for high school, and now we have one more.
Good evening, everybody. All right, we have quite a few new course proposals coming at you for the addition into this year's schedule in the 2022, 2022, 2023 school year. I will go through them by department, and after each one, I will ask for feedback. Went through the traditional processes outlined by our Board of Education for new course approval. The one part that we added last year that we also continue to take this year was a student panel. So we utilized our student leadership class with a class of 30 students, run through a protocol with all 10 courses over a 90-minute period, and I believe I include the feedback in the packet that you got from me. The feedback was great. It was always interesting to hear kids' perspective and everything. It kind of surprises you exactly what they go through first at that cost. And they're trying to gain perspective. Really, this is what it is. Yes, yes. So I'll get rolling right here. The first one I'd like to start with is film as literature. This is put forward by Mr. Patrick Stokely, who was a member of our English department. The idea is to create a class where they will examine films as they examine books. They'll look at narrative structure, genre conventions, subtext, technical, and artistic factors and purpose. In addition, students will examine how films often reflect culture and times in which they are made, and conversely, how motion pictures sometimes help shape the attitudes and values in society. One of the things that we were striving for with all of these classes putting forward was we were looking for electives that fit 912 or 1012, the lightest variety of students that we possibly could, and also be in-class participation, homework-like, non-homework-type classes. So with this class, Mr. Stokely will be selecting films from the already district-approved film list as he proceeds to build this course, probably in conjunction with Alan Dawson. They work closely together. Some of the feedback from our students in this one was they were excited about the fact that it would offer students another opportunity, students who weren't necessarily into sitting down and reading books, but also looking at maybe some of the classics from that film angle, but having book-like, group-like discussions about film, but also analyzing the angle of the camera shot, as well as some of the other tactical pieces that Mr. Stokely incorporates in his drama classes to help them understand maybe there's purpose behind everything that is done in film. And then also have discussions and counterpoints about the piece that they've watched, but also treat it as like a book. So that is film as literature. It would be an English elective. It would be a one-semester course. Any questions or feedback or comments? Okay, I guess. Sure. Questions overall before you, I'm sorry, should I ask? Oh, no problem. So the purpose, when we're adding 10, possible 10 courses, are we losing any courses? And then there's two-part questions I want, I want to try to stump you. The second part is that when we went to block schedule, we talked about not trying to add more stress to kids by dumping them before classes and trying to educate parents because they have eight hours. They don't have to have eight hours of classes, right? You know, they don't have to graduate college before they're in high school. And I see they're all electives, which I appreciate, but some are, some look heavier than others, I guess. So if you could answer both those. Absolutely. Some do, some in this packet are heavier than others, but the idea is right now, as a student goes through, they're looking at about six academic course load classes over a period of the two days where they have homework. We even have some of our, some of our elective classes right now that we're offering staff members to really peel back some of the homework in classes where students are like, there's no reason why they should have more homework in elective than they do say in an Algebra II class. So that's our big push right now. As we go through some of these classes, you have film as literature, everything's going to be classroom-based, so they're not going to have to do a whole lot outside of the school day. Given a 97, 87-minute class period, you can pretty much watch the majority of a feature film within that, but then take, if you watch five to seven films over the 26 class periods that you would have in a semester, then you would have about three to five days to break down the character analysis, the discussion of every one of those films, and that would be done in workshop style as well as working with, you know, they would each then take their own angle on it and give presentations to the class and work with classmates on that stuff. As we look through some of these classes, you'll notice that there are a few in there that are support classes for general education students to give them that time, that off-hour, and I'll highlight those as we go through them.
The reality is that kids aren't going to be taking more classes, but now they have more options in the electives.
They're, they will have more options. So we slow-played, we slow-played the electives going into this year because what we learned when we did trimesters, we came gangbusters right out of the gate with a whole bunch of electives, and what that led to is our staff members teaching five different sections of a course throughout the, or five different courses throughout the day, and then students were spread so thin across. So as we do registration for these courses, we will look and say, okay, have we met a benchmark to where we feel that this course is able to run? Some of them, we may even rotate on a yearly basis, which we've done in the past, so we don't overwhelm the students with choice, but at the same time, we don't overrun, overwhelm our staff with different core teaching assignments throughout the day. As I move on to Shakespeare class, this is the second offering from our English department.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I also have a question. So one of the line sort of thought processes, I am interested in going on the electives, the current versus what this will make, and then also wondering whether this is by NCAA approved, because I know, for example, my husband's district, they had some courses that had not been pre-approved or had not been re-vetted to the lay, a student actually lost their scholarship, it was reinstated, but has it have these been vetted by the NCAA?
So I do not know if these have been vetted by the NCAA process yet, but all of our course descriptions have fit into the course SCAD codes that are put forth by the state of Michigan. So as we go through this process, then our council will then take the next section and then compare it to the NCAA list to see what fits and what doesn't. They are our gatekeeper for our NCAA classes, so there will be some students, and current students right now, who take courses that are graduation requirements for NCAA, but they also take electives that are not NCAA-approved, but it does not affect their eligibility at that level.
Yeah, we'll note that once they both are NCAA-approved, we'll know which ones are as we put in our course catalog. So, and that really impacts a handful of graduates every year. It's not a huge number, but it is, we try to help with work that is made by Division I, Division II doesn't matter, so one or two, that doesn't matter. The two are a pretty small number.
So just like in our current course guide, that we have all of our classes that are approved and able to register for are indicated with the NCAA, Margaret Exton, once these go through the process, that practice will be applied to these also. Yes, ma'am.
I just wondered, if you have specific questions about the individual courses, should we call those and make the steps in mind, or?
This is, this is one we struggle with every time we do this.
Yeah.
We try to do the full proposal so you can see the breadth of the courses, and then we put it as a discussion, so we get a discussion.
So we would have kind of asked later. Okay, I just don't want to interrupt, so thank you.
All right. The next class being presented is a Shakespeare course offered by our English department, developed by Ms. Alan Dawson, once again, Mr. Patrick Stokely. The idea behind that class is actually a resurrection of an older class that we ran when we had trimesters. It was called Upperclassmen Seminar Shakespeare, where it was a deep dive into Shakespearean plays, as well as how they are applied today, and just about everything that we look at in terms of entertainment. The difference with this one is that used to be just 11th and 12th grade, a course offered to 11th and 12th graders. This will be expanded on down to 10th graders. So as our students finish their English IX class, they do a three-week dive into Romeo and Juliet to set them up for the 10th, the 10th-grade year of World Lit and Comp, but this was also set them up to, if they had a deeper interest in Shakespeare, they would be able to take this one semester elective offered by Ms. Dawson and probably co-taught or taught at the same time, or some other factor during the day with Mr. Stokely. With the block schedule, they believe this is a great opportunity for them to explore more literature and that they have more time for it than what we have time for in the English curriculum, to look deep into the plays, how they've been adapted from all the different versions that kids watch today, whether it's on the TikTok video or even through The Simpsons and some of the popular entertainment forms. So this, hopefully, this will be books where students will be able to pick as they will need in English elective somewhere in their four years, the World Lit and Comp, or the speech English IX, or our upperclassmen Lit and Comp. Moving into the science department, we have an introduction of a course from this Leslie Tracy, and that's the Introduction to Marine Biology. This course would be offered to sophomores, juniors, and seniors. It is a one-semester course. They will be receiving a biology or a science elective credit for this. As usual with Ms. Tracy's class, she did very much into live dissections or dissections in, so also going to operate with some virtual dissections. We have a ton of kids who our feedback has always told us that I want to explore marine biology, want to see what this is like before they get into a collegiate program, and they find out that marine biology is more than feeding a dolphin at these great places, but it's a lot deeper and a lot more involved than just what the popular belief of what that class is. I think it will pair well, as somebody had asked us in our parent forum, well, how much of this stuff, we're surrounded by the Great Lakes, how much will we look to cover with that this dive in there? I think this pairs well with our freshwater biology class, as that is already established in our science department, and they look at lake streams, rivers, and the impact of, environmental impact of the Great Lakes. This will then also look at the saltwater, the more popular belief of what marine biology is as they look at animals. Like I said, this will be a one-semester course, and the prerequisite, this is that the students successfully complete biology in their freshman year, so that they have a base of knowledge to work from. The next class from the science department is called Science Laboratory Strategies and Safety. It is a one-semester course, and it is offered, targeted grade is sophomores through seniors. This class is an elective where students can get hands-on experience, learning how to manage a stockroom, making mixed chemicals, inventory supplies, and maintain lab equipment, as well as dispose, properly learn the proper disposal of some of the chemicals that will be used by our chemistry department, following all of the EPA regulations. Essentially, a student, this class would have order forms filled out by people in the science department who teach chemistry, or their upcoming labs, and the students would then work with Mr. Caves and Ms. Spence to fill these orders, build a cart, learn, go through all the safety procedures, all the measuring procedures, all the disposal procedures, deliver to them, and then when they were done, the next day, these students would go and retrieve the carts with all of the necessary chemicals for disposal, and then take care of those with the guides from our two department chairs in our science department. Set them up for, those students who are potentially interested in working in a lab and following all those procedures as they can get maybe a job at the collegiate level, doing the same thing, as well as extend that to a career. We'll move into the social studies department, and we have sports and economics, sports, economics, and marketing, and this is a one-semester course. There are no prerequisites for this. This would actually meet, be another option to meet the mandatory economics requirement that is put forth by the state of Michigan. The focus of this would be that students would emphasize, they look at the financial, statistical, and psychological impact of marketing and economics in the sports world. Students would be able to assess the decision-making made by sport athletes, franchises, and sports enterprises. In turn, students would also be able to create and simulate their own financial scenarios based on current events that impact the sports world. Very project-based in this, especially the feedback on this from students was this is really a good alternative to the regular traditional econ class. Those still call, those still cover all of the necessary standards that are required for econ, but the students will be able to look at the impact of NCAA athletes now receiving pay or play, also look at how an athlete goes about with signing bonuses and guaranteed contracts, as well as sponsorships through Nike, and how that impacts everybody who plays out. Lots of, lots of hands-on experiences. Mr. Dubey talks about potentially going and visiting some major and minor league venues and potentially talking to some of the front office people as we go into this. We have had experience with this, where we've been invited to the Detroit Economic Club, when the Detroit Tigers and the ownership of the Illich family with the Red Sox, or with the Red Wings and the Tigers, they were down there, Dave Dombrowski had a chance to, our students had a chance to interact with Dave Dombrowski and asked him the day-to-day questions, like, how do you get into this? What is, what is your job? And that spurred a lot of interest for our students about five or six years ago, and Mr. Dubey has a passion for this, and he believes that our kids will actually be pretty fired up about that also. Moving on to our next one. This is a general elective credit, it's called Student Support and Study Strategies. One of the things that we have always dealt with at high school is as we have, as students come in as freshmen, there is a, there's always difficulty transitioning into that high school, that high school mode. Students are not very metacognitive about how they learn. How do I know what I know? How do I study for tests? How do I take notes? How do I do all of this stuff? This class would be set up to support general education students to do exactly that, teach them test-taking strategies, teach them how to take, how to take notes the proper way, teach them to have a properly-named email address, and how to communicate back and forth with an instructor or a professor or a teacher that they currently have. Talk about time management, self-advocacy skills, as well as organizational techniques, and also support reading and writing, reading and writing is mass support. One of the biggest skills I think that our students need to learn is they need to, they need to learn how to read a particular textbook in a particular way. A science textbook is set up differently from a social studies textbook, which is set up differently from a math textbook. If you know the difference and the variances between those different kinds of textbooks, you can really easily pull out the information. Too many times, your students approach it the same way all the time, and they don't, they're not very efficient at it, so it causes their homework load or their homework time to go well beyond anything that is definitely necessary. So to set them up with the proper building blocks, this is, in my opinion, this is a very badly-needed class at the high school. So as we look at students having eight classes in a day, we'd be able to slow down and really, you know, not do homework from another class in this class, but learn the skills to be efficient and proficient in your classes. If we can get them in as freshmen and have them utilize those skills throughout their next three years, that would be fantastic, or to have them take it as a senior before we launch them into post-secondary education would be also great. And that, the grades for that, that we put on is a credit and no credit, so we're not definitely giving a grade to learn how to get grades, but we're giving them credits for participation and picking up the skills. The next class, as we go into the math department, we have Computer Science Web Design, and this is a one-semester course offered by Mr. Baird, and this would be open as a math elective for freshmen through seniors. At Dexter High School, we have one computer course, and it's an AP computer programming right now. This would be our second computer course. We used to run a bunch of them, but as you know, technology, the way it grows, it doubles in time and speed. So for a long time, we were teaching languages, programming languages that hadn't been used in 17 or 18 years. So this is put forward by a company called highschoolcode.org, which supplies all of the necessary training, as well as the information in the curriculum for the course. This is what provides our curriculum for our AP computer course right now that we have, and we have plenty of students taking that. To be able to have students learn how to build a webpage, we can then start to maybe even have them teach some of our staff members build the webpage. That would be fantastic, but also, we've got some students right now currently in high school who do make an awful lot of money buying and selling things throughout the internet, and to be able to build their own webpage and set them up for success that way would be pretty nice to be able to do for them and set them off the right way, and that will go down as a math elective. Our second math elective is one, it's called Mathematical Approach to Critical Thinking, the acronym of MACT. It is using mathematical concepts that understand strategies and life choices. It's a one-semester course, put forward by Mr. Josh Jatton, who's a second-year teacher at Dexter High School. The prerequisites would be to successfully pass Algebra I and to have passed English IX. The English IX portion in there is so that as they start to explain the logic behind their discoveries, as they work their way through this class, they'll be able to write and explain and communicate well and clearly. MACT incorporates graph theory, math history, strategy games, as well as logic puzzles into the high school classroom setting. Through discovery and deductive reasoning, students will be able to apply mathematical concepts to the real world. So after talking to Mr. Jatton, after talking to a bunch of students, the students seem to be quite excited about this because it's a, it's a non-math math course. They get the, it's the thinking behind mathematics, and then applying it to whether it's how to solve a Rubik's Cube, or do some kind of number puzzle, or some kind of logical reasoning, all of the pieces and bits that go behind that to help them figure some things out. This is also helpful because right now, our math electives at the high school are very few and far. We have business math, and we have financial management. So as a senior, you need a math, a math elective to graduate. So if you're not on the AP course, pre-cal course, or anything like that, you have two options right now. So this is a non-business-based math elective that students will be able to take. And that would help, that would definitely increase choice for our seniors. Our next one is Visual Performing Arts elective, and that is jazz band. This is put forward by Dr. Moore. It would be a full-year course, or two semesters long. For the longest time, Dr. Moore has always had a, the on-the-school-day group that loved to play jazz. He decided that he should probably formalize this, and that the number of students that we have walk in the hallways that are musically inclined, but in our current music program, there is no place for them, whether it's playing a guitar or a different style of drum. The jazz band, which consists of 20 to 30 members, focused primarily on popular music styles from 1930s to 1970s, and the course competencies would include the ability to perform in all applicable styles, swing, big band, cool jazz, Latin jazz, bebop, familiarity with the basic chord progressions used in all styles, basic improvisational solo technique, and rhythmic and technical independence of all these styles. It was interesting talking to students about this one. They were all over the place. There were all over places, the non-musical students were like, no, there's no need for this. But then there were students in the class that were like, oh my gosh, I would love to take this. I would absolutely love to take this. And there were students who were not, who played guitar. There's no guitar class at the high school. Like they carried around with them. They would love to actually be able to participate and, and learn the, all of these different techniques from Dr. Moore to be able to play in the jazz band. This last one is, uh, this one is called Integrated Studies. This was put forth by David Tally, Teddy and Molly Sharp. And this is a, it could be a one semester course or it could be into a full year course. Students are interested in place-based learning experience where they can learn in areas of their interest. The integrated course allows students to participate in individualized, place-based, extended learning experiences while they are earning credits towards graduation. Learners and facilitators will design how to build and extend learning activities integrated with learner outcomes as profiled by the state of Michigan published curriculum and in the DCS learner profile. Integrated Studies would provide multiple ways for students to learn outside of the classroom and achieve credit toward the high school graduation. As outlined by the MMC, these personalized integrated learning opportunities are based on student interest and need and are planned in advance and include rigorous content. Students are offered authentic opportunities for students for collaboration and with highly qualified teachers and or community partners demonstrate competencies outside of the traditional classroom. This would allow us to leverage some of the places in our community that would need, that are looking for our Dexter students to step into their workplace. So I know that we've been working long and hard to figure out how we can leverage those relationships, get our students employed. And while they work, they are also earning credits. They're covering competencies that we would cover in a normal classroom instead of sitting and getting them. They're actually moving through the day and incorporating those skills in, as they work through a career potential. So I know we've done a little bit of this, we edged a little bit of this with Spark Program. We're looking to expand our, our pathways at the high school level. Definitely at the nine, the nine, 10, nine to 10th grade level as we kind of bottleneck our way into those. And then once we get to 11th, 12th grade level, they have a whole bunch of different options to them, but we're kind of pretty tight as we look at freshman and sophomores.
And one of the, one of the reasons for this course is as a vehicle to be able to allow us some flexibility to offer some of the opportunities for kids based on their interests. For example, the kid wants to get CPR certified or get a CNA as a provider's assistant. It's not a whole semester class, but they might also be a math credit that they can finish up in an alternative way. They might get a science credit, they can finish up in an alternative way. We can do that in context. It gives us vehicle to be pretty flexible with kids to find ways for one hour a day or more depending on the kid, of different ways they can earn credit in our community.
So that was the last class that I had for you for presentation. But what I will say is we've had, we had more than 10 get placed forward. Sorry, did I miss one?
Yeah, one more. Middle school Mandarin and language. We've had kids do Mandarin up through, they're in sixth grade right now. So it would allow them, if, if they want to take it, it would allow an option to take that seventh grade as much as far as the elective rotation. If they don't choose it, they will, but it gives that option at least. I mean, they have a lot of things to do.
Oh, no problem. So we had, we had more classes put forth than what we presented to you tonight through the, through the process of being reviewed by department chairs, as well as being reviewed by a parent committee and the students. We pulled some of them back because our big focus was if we were going to add courses, we want to add courses that we believe students will be definitely interested in and at the same time that were homework light to non-homework classes so that we could give them a chance in their day to just learn, to enjoy learning and not have to carry it with them in their backpack beyond the school day. But to actually be there, interacting with people. And like I said, enjoy, enjoy the idea of learning. Hopefully spark something in their, in their brains, in their, like spark their passion to do something with maybe something that picked up in one of these electives.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are we, you're going to stay around so that when we're doing the discussion, we'll ask questions then?
Sure.
You can have anything else to do with my already?
Oh, no, no, not me. Nope. No, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to our next agenda item, which is public participation, I wanted to point out that per current Washington County Health Committee regarding high COVID-19 transmission, all attendees will be required to wear masks and physically distance. And please be courteous and wear that mask over your nose and your mouth at all times. So as we move on to the next item on the agenda, it's public participation, which is also known as public comment. So if you have something to say to the board, this is your opportunity. Each speaker is allowed a five, a maximum of five minutes for a total of 30 minutes unless otherwise notified. At this point in the meeting, those interested in making public comment will be asked to raise their hands so that the time may be divided equally. Each speaker will be asked to announce their name and indicate if they represent any organization or an agency. We've also asked in the past for you to fill out the green sheet that's located on as you enter the room, especially if you want a comment back from the board or the superintendent. Members who may speak more than once on the same subject during a single meeting. And so anyone who would like to speak, raise their hand or if you want to fill out that green sheet. And you can hand it in to Hope so if you didn't want to come all the way over to me. Sure. Yeah, you can, yeah.
I apologize for the mask. I'm not sick. I'm, well, I'm fighting pneumonia, so breathing is a little difficult already. So I'm not trying to be disrespectful and just trying to pass up.
Do you sleep with this?
I would like to speak on student safety. I'm sorry, my name is Ryan Barzak. Student safety, you touched on this earlier, that the unfortunate incidents that happened in Oxford. And I'd like to point out a simple fact that today the prosecutor announced that they are looking at even possibly charging school administration for negligence. That being said, unfortunately, we had a similar incident, almost touched home with Dexter. There's a lot of questions that the community has. And for some of us, it hit extremely close to home. Myself being one of them, there are other parents in this room that whether there was a list or not a list, there was a list being circulated online amongst the students and families that there was a hit list. My son was one of those. There are other parents in this room that their kids were on it. We deserve and have a right to have answers. And that's what we're asking for. Our questions have been ignored. I emailed today with the superintendent and the principal of the high school and I got a response and the first sentence in the response was, Ryan, I'm sorry you're asking for more information. I don't have the right to have information that my son was potentially on a hit list? That's wrong on a basic human level. How many of you have children? Raise your hands. How many of them are in school? Your kid was on a hit list, whether it was true or not, how many would stop asking questions? I asked similar questions, specific follow-up questions that myself and other parents were looking for answers. One was ignored and it was, who conducted the investigation? And were they independent of a school-held position? That was ignored. So I immediately emailed back. The response I got was the investigation was handled by superintendent, Snowak, Mr. Kane, Ms. Walls and Officer Beal, who was the school liaison. Not one person independent of the school. No one independent controlling the flow of information. No other local law enforcement. You had the FBI making statements last week that every single threat will be investigated, whether it's determined to be true or not. If it's true, they prosecute. If it's not and it turns out to be a hoax or a prank, they're prosecuted. So if there was an independent investigation done to its fullest and they, it was determined that there was no serious threat and it was a hoax or a prank, where's that information? Who's being prosecuted? We deserve as parents to know. We have that right. We need to know if we can send our children to school safely. Not be ignored, not have it swept under the rug. It's a basic human right. We deserve that information. And I for one am tired of things that people in this school administration don't want the public to know sweeping it under the rug. I'm going to ask the board, how many of you knew of the past experiences with the student in question? One of them being a similar threat to bring a gun to school and shoot a student that was reported to school administration and subsequently ignored? Because that threat was made against my same child three years ago. How much of that was taken into consideration when there was no credible threat brought up? In today's society, you cannot afford to make that judgment call. You just can't. Look at what happened in Oxford. They had a meeting the day before because of the student's behavior. They decided didn't need to be punished. Look what happened the next day.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Leave this?
Yeah, thanks. Anyone else from the collective would like to make a comment?
Ultimately, she'd in a few minutes. My name is Holly Bannan. You've all seen me here a few times already this year. I don't, I have nothing planned. I just want to reemphasize that I believe that the board needs to be aware. I don't know how much you guys know of this situation that Mr. Barzak is speaking of. I, I understand that there are rules and regulations and laws about how much information can be shared about particular students. Totally understand that. I just would have appreciated a personal follow-up as someone in our family was also on the list, this alleged list. And as I spoke with administration on Friday, gave all the information that I knew, I waited all weekend for something. And I understand we got the community email on Friday that said there was no credible threat found. However, I thought on a personal level, it would have been much more reassuring given the level of concern that we had because we had also been given information about particular, a particular incident about the alleged student basically threatening my son in middle school, which my son has no issue with this, this student. We don't, we, we don't want any issues. We, it's just, there's just so much involved and it would have been really great to have the reassurance going into Monday. It is really truly okay to send your kids to school. As a board, I just would like to have some sort of policies where if we have some sort of alleged threats, what, what are the steps that we take and how do we follow up with people who are greatly concerned about the well-being of their children?
Thank you. Thank you, Holly. Okay, so no one else rushing to the microphone. We'll move on to administrative and board updates.
Mike Cabana with Holly. Still a little concerned about the whole thing. Usually don't be concerned about stuff like this, but just still trying to make sure we're good. Kind of hearing, you know, who did help with the investigation and I just want to make sure those, all those people are qualified, not that they're not, but I just want to make sure because what just happened last week, sounds like there's way too much information that things should have been changed and been different and it wasn't. And we just want to really feel good about it. Kid went to school today. Kid doesn't want to talk about this, doesn't want to deal about it, any of it, doesn't really know too, too much about it, but it's things that we're hearing from other people in the school. And at the end of the day, you just really want to feel good about sending your kid to school. So I'd kind of like to know everyone that was involved and make sure they know how to investigate this, you know? So that's all.
Thank you. Okay, next topic agenda is the administrative and board updates, starting with Dr. Timison's Supreme Court update.
So I'll address the topics that we talked about in the public comment. First off, our administrators have done thousands of investigations. I've done at least 6,000.
We can't hear you.
So I'll address the, the topics of the public comment. First off, our administrators have done thousands of investigations. I've done at least 6,000 student discipline investigations myself. The, we conducted over 30, somewhere between 30 and 40 student and parent interviews Thursday night and Friday, including during the day. There was actually no threat. It was completely fabricated. The kid that was accused never made it any threat whatsoever. Everything was fabricated. So we had to chase that down. We continued to chase it down and there was never any threat. The list, we couldn't track down the list that, that was also fabricated by some students as we talked to them. They were like, yeah, we thought maybe this, but they weren't actually kids that were involved and there was no threat to be involved in. So after we've conducted all those investigations, we worked with the sheriff's department. At, at that time, it was determined, he, they even agreed, there was no threat. So as far as credibility of a threat, there actually was no threat to be credible or not. There was never a threat. That's why we asked in our, when I wrote the letter to the community, if there is an actual threat, people should call 911 or contact the school. We, it stirred up over social media and created a ton of unrest and fear over something that was completely made up that never happened. So on positive note, we ran a vaccine clinic on Friday and we had, we had a group of five through 11 year olds get vaccinated with their second dose. We are, we're releasing twice a week to making waves to talk about positive student programming throughout the district. In response to the Oxford incident, we have reviewed our school safety plan. We've conducted, reviewed Atlas protocols with our staffs again. A couple more staffs, they'll have staff meeting tomorrow. A couple more staffs, they'll have staff meeting tomorrow, Wednesday. We did some training with the students today briefly. We are looking at how to conduct. We did some training before the school year with the high school staff. We're looking at how to conduct further trainings. We do them at the ISD now, but we'd like to do a refresher. Yet when we do those refreshers, they are live simulations with blanks fired, et cetera. So we want to try to be conscious of not to. We want to make sure that everyone's ready to be able to learn through that moment. And it might be a little different version of it where we have volunteers that are ready and then others that watch the simulation. We have we're working with, we met with all of the police forces and law enforcement throughout the county. On Thursday morning, we have another meeting in January to update the emergency operation plans. The board every two years must review that plan and close session and then approve the plan. We will have a review sometime early next year after we work with law enforcement because we need them consistent from jurisdiction to jurisdiction so that the law enforcement can have a similar a similar model to follow depend because they have to respond like the sheriff's department has to respond to multiple schools. So we want to have a similar model. We are reviewing, we've gone through and done the administrative review. We've done the reminders. We've worked through to make sure everything's in place. We've checked the equipment, checked. We have many, many safety protocols and physical safety components in place that we don't publicly share everything that we have. But we have locked down doors with buttons we can push, et cetera. We've checked all of these just to make sure everything's operational. Again, it's a regular check, but we sped it up a little bit. So we've gone through the protocols to ensure the safety of our students and our staff. And in response to last week, it was completely fabricated. There was nothing to respond to in the end.
Two follow-up questions to your update. When you said that the Washtenaw sheriff was involved in the investigation, just to expand on that, it was beyond Officer Beesel?
No, it was it was Officer Beesel. The sheriff's department, he's a sheriff deputy or a sheriff officer. He's a he's employed by the sheriff's department. Between the city and the school district, we contract for time for Officer Beesel's time so that he can be solely designated to be on our campus. And he was available on Friday all day. They they had reports, there were schools, most of the schools in the county had shut down or were in the same kind of trying to chase down threats or real threats or manufactured threats, et cetera. So all the there are all the police force throughout the county and the state was tasked. We had, I think there were almost 100 schools closed Friday.
Thanks. I mean, I don't want to discount Officer Beesel's position. I mean, yes, he's he's a school liaison. I'm thankful for that.
He's been an officer for he's been an officer for 25 years, I believe. He's kind of experienced.
Assuming he has the resources of the entire sheriff's department and
Yes, he does. He has the resources of the entire department.
And then my second question to follow up is, do we know if I know it was approximately 650 students that got the first dose, did they all return or?
The vast majority did. I was unfortunately not able to be there because I was interviewing. I hope I did a good investigation.
I just I had a I had a question asked to me and I was like, I'm pretty sure so I was followed.
It was pretty close to that.
Okay.
I have a question also regarding the communication that was spread through the community. Your teacher and your discipline that will occur, I mean, that's very harmful for the community and for the students that were accused of, obviously for the families that heard this information. Do we know a policy in place that spreads this type of fear? You know, it's like drawing fire in a movie theater, right? You're not allowed to do that. Is there anything going on there?
We only have jurisdiction for things that happen in school. So most of it started after school and outside of school. And then we're closed on Friday. We have zero jurisdiction. We can only suspend or discipline a student if they do something with a nexus to the school in school. If they make a direct threat to a school, there's a nexus. If they fabricate something outside of school and spread it through social media, especially Snapchat, which disappears unless they've done a screen capture. We have zero jurisdiction. The Supreme Court last summer ruled on a very, a pretty important case. It said we can't punish a kid for something they do that is not in the school.
Well, we have anti-bullying policies in place to prevent, I understand that he has to be in school, but I think that that seems that seems hard to understand because if it's continued bullying, it's something could happen.
If it impacts a student's education, then we have a nexus. But we're one day in past that and we have no the student that was falsely accused, we went through today, there was we went through today and the day went okay.
On this incident in particular, in general, okay. I do a workplace volunteer every day, actuators about three or four times a week. Lot of different settings. None were easy. There always a lot of gray years. The one thing I would say is that remember the school closed Friday. Now was to conduct an investigation and for the safety of the children. You know, some schools went right back to schools. Next day, did they didn't stop a beat. Almost every school, I would say in Michigan, had some type of similar situation in a different different range of threshold, right? I would say, and Jennifer hit on a little bit. If we can still communicate with all your friends, your parents, educators, everybody. All the workplace volunteer issues usually start, especially ones in school. They're triggered something by bullying, somebody saw something that was funny, but it wasn't funny. Usually someone who might be out of place for whatever reason. So kind of think about that. And then the parents. It doesn't help the school board. I'm not saying anyone did this, but it doesn't help the school board if you just circulate rumors by yourselves. Because you all know that study where communication flows. You know, I said, I tell Mara, hey, my sweater is gray. I'm wearing it to church. She's my time it gets around the room, I'm wearing a, you know, a psychedelic sweater. Shoot, that was using a crime or something. So I would just ask that you, like Dr. Miss Assi, you do, and everybody that's listening, that one, if there's a threat, call the police. That's what they're there for. And the comment on the SRO, he's a Washtenaw police officer. So if we can't trust him to do an independent investigation or help with the investigation, that he shouldn't be in the school system. The thing on the communications, we're reviewing the EOP right now. Came out right before the incident. So that'll also be reviewed. We'll take a look at the communications piece of it. I do understand a portion of what what should I know and what can we tell? Because if it's and it's in there, but maybe needs review a little bit. A little more third. Everybody, everybody hear me okay? What I was saying? That's pretty much what I have to say on the on the school incident. So I think we can look at the communications piece. That seems to be the biggest concern of the parents. But again, like I said, if you think there's something, call the administrator, call the police. That's what they're there. Don't call it, don't call any of them. Everyone that can help them.
There was lots of that. There was lots of reporting.
We don't, we don't. I'm saying, I'm not saying you didn't report out there, right? In general.
So it's not supposed to be a two-way conversation. I mean, just so just put a clash on that. Moving on to the board president update. I just wanted to update from our November 1st meeting. Ms. Keller, Ms. Keller asked about breaking with M A S B and A S B. And I had sent her an email earlier in the day. There was a foreword from Don Retriva, who is the director of M A S B. And he addressed the the N S B A their comments. And I just wanted to read the letter because I think it was like you said, I thought it was very important. And Jennifer and I got to speak to him when we went to the M A S B conference. So it starts off, a few weeks ago, in the news from Capitol, we shared with you a letter that was sent from the National School Boards Association to President Joe Guyden. That letter was received, has received significant media attention and has caused many of you to be asked about your district's relationship with N S B A and M A S B. While the letter itself was concerning to me and the M A S B Board of Directors, your boards having to take time to address this was more concerning. So I wanted to communicate with you directly about where M A S B stands on the letter and N S B A. The letter was drafted and sent by the N S B A's interim executive director in response to stories that they have heard from members and read about in the news. None of the state affiliates were consulted on the letter. Even though there were references to situations in Michigan school, Michigan Boards of Education, N S B A did not talk to us first. If we would have been asked, we would have told them not to send the letter and it does not reflect what M A S B believes. One of the worst parts of the situation is that school boards need all the support from public we can get. And N S B A made school boards look like they were insensitive to parents. M A S B firmly believes in community members being able to share their opinions and concerns with the Boards of Education and the public comment belongs on a school board's agenda. We do not believe that the community members who have concerns with boards or districts and chooses choose to express those opinions are domestic terrorists. We also have not heard any actions in Michigan that would seal the need for federal intervention. The letter was trying to speak on behalf of school board members across the country who may have experienced situations that are different than here in Michigan. Regardless, it was an overreach by N S B A. M A S B does have concerns that some situations experienced by school board members and or administrators have moved way beyond people simply sharing grievances or asking questions. The fact that we are hearing about school board members and superintendents being threatened for decisions they've made is beyond what we would consider appropriate. All of you should be able to serve your community without threat of harassment or violence. Civility must remain in public discourse. As a state affiliate, M A S B has not publicly called out N S B A. Our leadership has numerous conversations and meetings with members of their staff and board of directors expressing our disapproval of the letter and possible solutions for moving forward. N S B A historically has been a champion of local control and states' rights. They successfully have argued against incredible overreach during the Bush and Obama administrations by the U.S. Department of Education and worked with Congress to return authority back to states and local districts. While we disagree with the letter, we believe correcting this error and charting a path forward is easier when we are a member of their organization. N S B A has been a quality organization for years and losing their voice in Washington, D.C. could result in this administration or future moves deciding that the that the youth members, sorry, youths should have a larger role. Sorry, the U.S. State of Education should have a larger role in local education, which you parents or school school board members would like to see. Lee, last week, the N S B A Board of Directors issued an apology to the state associations, which they have a link to read. Well, I think the apology should have come sooner. I appreciate the N S B A Board finally addressing it and that they are reviewing the process that led to the letter and how situations like this can be prevented in the future. They have also enough and expedited process of hiring a new executive director that we expect will bring the organization back to a space of advocating for local control. We are committed to watching N S B A closely and ensuring that they move in the right direction in the upcoming months. And M A S B expects more from them and you should too. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out at any signs of listening. So I thought that was important to share with everyone, especially as a response to the question that was asked in the public comment. That's really all I have as a school board president update. So if there are any questions or we can move on to Aiden and Griffin.
So I'll start off, I'm an eighth-year elementary, young boys from second grade. I've been given instruction in using it to create buildings and bridges to ensure they're sturdy. Commerce, science, math concepts. And then the teachers are learning and implementing the new reinforced curriculum. Two new pair of educators have been hired. And Mr. McCall noted the vaccine clinic for five, 12-year-olds was a success. At Pino Ametrae, they had a food drive for faith in action and raised over 1,000 non-perishable goods. And Wiley, Wiley, the student council has been making appreciation cards for bus drivers. And they're doing a, it sounds like food clothing drive potentially to perfect the nation again for the new Avalon Housing over there. And students, I'm looking forward to Science Alive coming in next week.
I'll move on to Starmont Creek side. Ms. Notcher had reported that many of the classes in fifth and sixth grade are taking on math and technology-based passing projects involving 3D modeling and working with clientele and just kind of general life skills. So that's what the tools Creek has been working on. On Mill Creek, the transition between Ms. Bronson and Mr. Kane is going smoothly as Ms. Bronson is leaving her post as principal. And then the high school, all students in response to the Oxford tragedy have been have been briefed in Alice Protocol, which is our active shooter protocol. And there's been heightened awareness of the OK to say prevention program that is the hotline that you should be reporting for students amongst the police and administration. That's everything for the student update.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, which is consent items. We have new hires, resignations, and the October budget report. I move to the Board of Education, approving that item. It has been moved and seconded that the consent items be approved in bulk. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent items in bulk, say aye.
Aye.
All those who are opposed, please say nay.
Hi, everyone. The resignation was not actually proposed to be on.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I didn't think I saw anything. Thank you. They have been passed. Moving on to action items, the first action item we have is to add a board meeting on December 20th, 2021. Our packet includes proposals for 10 new DHS courses and the one new Mill Creek course. Group four policy course proposals must come before the board twice prior to approval. This evening's meeting is the last one scheduled for 2021. In addition, the November budget revision is taking extra time this year because of S R funds and will need to be adopted as soon as it is ready. In order for the courses to be approved prior to the January scheduling and allow opportunity to do the budget revision as soon as it is prepared, a short meeting has been proposed for December 20th, 2021 at 5:00 P.M. I move the Board of Education scheduling a meeting on December 20th, 2021 at 5:00 P.M. for the purpose of acting on proposed new courses and completing the budget revision. Second. It has been moved and seconded to have a meeting on December 20th at 5:00 P.M. I'm assuming here in the main support room. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will put this to a vote. All those in favor of adding the meeting on 12:20 at 5:00 P.M., please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Or nay. It has been passed. Our second action item on the agenda is to update the Mill Creek course name. It's 9/20/2021, meaning the board approved name changes for several D C S existing courses in order to bring them into alignment with N T A A requirements. This evening's packet includes an executive summary regarding a Mill Creek course that requires a name update for N T A A guidelines.
I move that the Board of Education approve changing the name of Geometry, M M C, to Geometry.
Is there any discussion?
Just general.
I just wondered what M M C is.
Just generic.
Oh. It's geometry. If there's any more discussion? And all those in favor of approving the changing of the name of Geometry, M M C, to Geometry, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Or nay. Okay. It has been passed. Geometry, M M C, will now be known to the state board as Geometry. Okay. We are moving on to discussion items, which is Okay, we are moving on to discussion items, which is reviewing the DHS and M C course proposal. Does anybody have any questions? I know we had the questions on the first course and then we sort of tabled them for now. So if you want to go in the order that they were presented?
All my papers are out.
Well, you're in luck because I was following along and moving my papers, so.
See what they announce, of course, and then we can.
Yeah, how about we do that? So did more than any more questions on the first course that was presented, which was film and literature?
Yeah, just a comment. It's going to come up, I'm sure, from parents. So be sure, and I know that you mentioned that the district approved film list. I'm sure in a course like this, you've got films they want to put in. And is there, what happens if there's an opt out, if a parent doesn't want their kids seeing a particular film?
We have a, in our board policies, we have a policy that outlines which movies we can, or what criteria for movies to show. My anticipation is it'll start on the syllabus listing movies, but it might be something that comes up as it goes along, but it still would have to fit within the policy. So we can't off, we can't show rated R movies without, unless there's a scene out of it that we can show. But overall, we have parent permission for anything that's above the rating or the range.
Yeah, I appreciated that Ken noted that they would be district approved films.
So my last question on that one, and thank you for noting that, and I have a similar question. But I also wonder, are these specifically going to be films that have books that are adapted from books or not necessarily? I just didn't know whether that was, you know, I'm calling it an English class. I didn't know whether there was an intent prior to a book.
According to Mr. Silke, it would be a combination of both. And when there is a film that has, that has a book connected to it, they will look at the reasons why the film or the book may have differences and how, usually because a scene could not be properly portrayed as it can be described in a short period of time. Also look at the liberties that are taken and the different messages that the two different versions convey.
See, I took my discussion. I took a class in college, which was literature and film, which specifically only addressed books that were turned into films. So I was excited about this and then when I was reading the course description to see that it was really examining a film as, as you would have looked. I thought that was such an interesting concept, so I appreciated the mixture between the two. All right.
I thought that's an English class.
Well, speaking of English, that's something you might actually want to take. Shakespeare was the next one that we, that Ken presented. Does anyone have any discussion on the Shakespeare course?
Uh, yeah. Great. Yeah, I just have one thing. Do you know what like the sample size of the students pulled for who wanted to take Shakespeare was? Because, again, Shakespeare early, but do students really know what they're getting into with a Shakespeare class?
I, I truly appreciate the question. So what, where our sample size will come from is when we do offer course registration and actually see how many students list this as their, as their first or even a second choice. Usually what we try to do is we shoot for a class size of anywhere from 15 to 20 as, as a, almost like a cut number in order to run a section. So we can justify the cost of it for one teacher, one, you know, one FTE. So we have had classes in the past that we run, we run in the registration every year. And every year they never come close. We still keep them on the books because we never know when there's going to be a chance where maybe we have a very large group of students who really like Shakespeare. They want to be able to have that option. So it's more about having options to students than actually finding like a whole group of people.
Thank you, Griffin, for that question. And I, it reminds me that I really wanted to encourage Griffin in, when we're discussing things, please chime in with your voices. We'd love to hear yours. I mean, we love hearing your updates as well, but you are also part of the discussion. So thank you so much for, for that added question. It was very valuable. Does anyone else have anything?
Just want to thank you for asking me questions. We're all probably thinking.
Really are kids that truly enjoy this class. There are. Yeah.
Yeah, I would have been one of them.
I would not.
Okay, moving into the sciences, the next class that they're kind of presented was the introduction to marine biology.
Is that truly a lab-based, like dissecting or, you know, you mentioned, I wasn't quite sure what, you know, other trips to rivers and streams or any, you know, hands-on outside of the classroom?
As, as far as I know, it's definitely going to be dissection lab-based, as well as trying to pull in some guest speakers that are in the field to offer awareness of the, what the entire career encompasses, as opposed to just what the popular belief of marine biology is. In the past, the feedback we've gotten from students who have gone into it is they get into their collegiate classes, they start to get into their, their major, and it is not what they thought it was. It's so much bigger than training animals, you know, in captivity.
That's a good course where you can actually start from scratch. You can fit it in and work on a live project, be able to work through it during the course of the year, at least give you a piece of it. Or suggest sitting in a classroom, maybe you can take something for real and use it. Pollution or environmental contamination. Encourage you guys to think like that. That actually gets students, I think, who gets to be more involved because they can actually work on it. Or have something that they brought in with.
Is there, is there a course currently on oceanography?
There is a, an elective that has been, has been in that realm of those classes that get offered every year. There just doesn't seem to be enough students to take, that subscribe to it to run an action section. But something very similar in our freshwater bio class, we work with trout farm just up the way. We go and look at all the breeding ponds and we look at all the stuff that Mr. Carragher does. We spend a day out there with them, learning the whole process of his, the growing of the trout, as well as the catfish, process he goes through and as well as the maintenance of everything. And we actually even get a couple of students working out there. So, and to speak to that, that will be hopefully something that they grow the introduction to marine biology and as they connect with the people in the community, all the futures.
We did, you know, we actually had ocean ball competitions where we, national competition has been very well.
That's, yeah, that's where I was going with this, which is we have ocean ball, which is oceanography, very, very similar to what you're talking about. They talk about, you know, climate change and lots of different topics. So I was just wondering if that could be somehow woven in.
I completely anticipate that it will be. I know that our, our success at the ocean ball level was driven by the passion of Ms. Cheryl Wells. And as, as she went into retirement, now we're just hoping that some of her younger teachers pick up that current passion or that same passion she had to keep us going in that direction.
And we do have, behind the high school, we have a large retention pond. We have a mitigated wetland that we maintain. And then we have, the creek runs through our properties. So there are opportunities right on our campus. I know the trout guys, trout in every year. We have opportunities that are natural right at the high school campus.
A question about the course, though. Is there any overlap curriculum with freshwater biology? If a student took both classes, would they feel like they were just kind of learning the same thing twice?
I believe right now the freshwater bio class is not very, not very much based in dissections, where this will probably pick up the dissection piece where they're looking at shark pups, as well as dissecting starfish and other marine animals like that. The freshwater bio is looking at microorganisms that we are finding in the wetlands and the rivers, being with the DNR, talk about the brown trout release that happens in Mill Creek every couple of years and the impact of that on the river.
Would you akin this to more like a lab for college students, like you have the class and then the lab?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you know? All right. We have science laboratory strategies and safety.
I guess one, it's a process question more than a contact question. That was the one course that had a lot of difference of opinion, like clubs versus class. I'm just wondering, after giving that input, how, how did it?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I couldn't quite understand your question to this.
Well, in the feedbacks from the students and the community, that was the one that there was more substance of the feedback than any of the other classes. And I'm just wondering how that feedback was ultimately addressed. I guess I sort of know because you're presenting the class, but I'm just wondering, how, how was the feedback useful or not useful? Or how did it impact anything?
It's, it's always interesting. I think as we spoke to our parents, the parents definitely, they looked at this more as a potential, like a glorified laboratory assistant than actually learning the safety procedures. They were also concerned that if this is, if they learn safety procedures at the beginning of every science class, often we take a small portion and grow it into an entire semester course. Some of the students had the same question also. As we discussed it with both groups, they did also realize that there are actual careers and jobs out there that deal with the, like, the combination of chemicals and mitigation chemicals as they are being used and the impact they have at proper disposal, that there are actual career competencies that can be learned through these. So we hope that it's a, with a curriculum behind it, it is not, it does not turn into a lab assistant where somebody is in the back just washing beakers and cleaning test tubes, but actually looking at the impact and how to properly handle chemicals and dispose of chemicals, as well as set up the right measurements for those. Thank you. You're welcome.
The next course is sports economics and marketing.
I, I mean, I really appreciate all of the work that you did and I love the way that it's, the rubrics that you use in terms of evaluating each course. But I just, I love the fact that, that we're adding more options at a, you know, as you said, it's not A, not A P or I V. It's something that's accessible to more students. So I think that that's really important and will, will help the district. So thank you.
You said there's no reference for this class, no math, statistics, but then you mentioned they're doing statistics. I mean, maybe I'm not as thrilled by everybody else, but you know, Paul's a square, of course, but it sounds like a, I'm like tennis football. What's the, I mean, I'm just being honest, you know, to me, that's why I see it as, you know, as a course that'd be fun to take, but what are you going to really get out of it? I mean, are you going to be teaching statistics, math? This, this means I'll never be good math course. You can teach, tie in math, economics, better than some, salaries, margins, economics, cost-based analysis, return on investment, that kind of stuff, which are real world stuff, but I don't, my sort of critical, I don't like see any of that in there. Maybe, maybe, and I checked it too, but I don't see any of that. So I don't know. I'm just trying to see more.
So, so all of the, all the base economic principles, when we talk about supply and demand, we talk about what drives a market in terms of what students I think are very familiar with on a daily basis, and that's what they see as athletes. Talking to a couple of our community members who are coaches at the NCAA level and the impact that the NIL has had on students, student athletes in its first year. Local students who have played for club volleyball teams, whether it's at the Legacy Center or all over the place, all of a sudden are getting paid to come and work camps and are entering into agreements that they really have no legal background or no legal understanding of what they're actually getting into when they make the commitment, sign this. Some of our students are, find themselves in that spot, but also some of the students would like to have a little flavor of something other than just micro, macro, supply, demand, equilibrium, market-driven kind of economics, something to spice it up for them a little bit. I think it's, it's, it'll use the idea of the impact of statistics on the value of an athlete and what drives their, what drives their salary, but also how are these organizations finding the necessary money? And what's the impact of the cost of a combo meal at Comerica Park? And how does that play into $140 million, seven-year guaranteed salary of a second baseman? And what does that actually mean? What does it mean to be guaranteed? So a lot of the information that they hear, taught to them through the competencies of M M C and E C O.
So I see the course is titled sports economics and marketing. I, I mean, I see how those are connected, but was there ever a, like a proposal for just a marketing economics class? I feel like sports economics is kind of niche, so like skipping over just marketing economics, which is more broad and that would give more people opportunity.
There has never been a marketing class put forth by Dashar High School. We have that covered through our Southwest Consortium, through Salim, where it's actually practical, everyday marketing, where they are running a school store and they're buying merchandise, taking surveys of students for what they would like and how it would sell, and actually they're running the actual business owner. I think the marketing piece comes from this because one of the projects, or some of the projects that students will have to do is they themselves will have to market themselves in order to land a Nike deal or a Adidas deal. So they'll have to go through all the steps in order to create a business plan in order to drive their value, to see what they can get. Make that as part of the presentation.
Yeah, thank you for expanding on that because I, I'll be honest, I mean, I, I thought it looked fun, but I also just, all I thought was Moneyball. So thank you for explaining that further. Next thing is the student support and study strategies. I thought this was so important. I think this is, this is something that is very easily missed. Some kids get this very, just have a knack for their, for their study things and some things don't. And I thought a more breakdown of taking different textbooks and how they need to be read differently, I think is, I think that's really important.
And it goes beyond that because we, you know, we have, our students who are just, they're natural learners. They, they pick it up very quickly. And we also have students who receive accommodations, but then we have a whole group of students in the middle, our general education students who do need these tools. But because of the hustle and bustle of curriculum and trying to get everything in in a certain amount of time, they don't necessarily transfer the skills from the elementary level where they teach you these into actual application as they work their way through their career. So to be a little meta-cognitive about the learning they're receiving in the classroom and the techniques that teachers are using to create assessments or to create evaluations. Once you know, as a learner, once you know that part of the game or become aware of that part of the game, your learning tends to, to pick up very quickly and it becomes a little bit more easily hopefully. So that's what we hope to gain with this, just to give students a little extra helping hand when it comes to the academic side.
How many courses do you have? Me, unless you're a straight A student, if you're a good student that's, that has spent a lot of hours actually, if you're doing well, it's a good course to have. Some kids probably don't need to take it, already got it. But, you know, if I had to wait until I was in fourth grade, maybe someone who needs ninth grade, it's a little, not too, too late. It's a lifelong skill, but it's, I mean, how are you going to prioritize? Man, this course, of course, should be prioritized by, I don't know, I don't want to say that needs-based, not a needs-based, but I, with those counselors on, releasing coming out of Mill Creek at. really see coming out of Mill Creek that that studies hard, but just struggling.
Right. So currently what we do at the high school, as students come into their freshman year, we do a graduation watch list meeting. We do it, ooh, I think we have six or seven of them scheduled. We did them orderly, but we decided we need to move them up. And as we look at students who are struggling academically, also have all sorts of different factors, but maybe don't qualify for a five oh four at I E P. We we have in place our graduation coaches, uh we meet with our counselors, we go over all of these factors, and we track these students from the time that we can start collecting grades on them in their freshman year, all the way through their senior year. And this would just be another helping to helping hand and support them in an actual hour in or a period in their day, sometime or maybe multiple times throughout their high school career, to where they can get this kind of support by a teacher, by somebody who's in there with them, somebody who understands maybe what um what their biology teacher is trying to explain and how their approach on that, uh the assessment for the project. Just kind of like I said, a little a little peek behind the curtain for students for that academic support piece.
And the way we schedule classes is we don't determine how many sessions we're going to offer. We ask the kids what they want to take, and then whatever they chose is their first option. We build a number of sessions to try to accommodate that. Then we start working through the dominoes of where we have conflicts and how we can build the sections they can take. So if every kid in the school signs up for it, we'll figure that'll be, that'd be interesting. But we will build as many sections as kids sign up for it as their first choice.
So know that graduation requirements take priority. So however many sections, however many teachers those take up, that includes world language draws take a priority. So this is uh when we schedule the classes, there's seven different priority codes that go into our programming. This is going to be sitting right at about uh number four or number five with uh world language, music. Anybody who gets taught by shared staff is kind of up toward the top because they get pushed into a certain part of the day. And we are start to look at those graduation requirements, which are usually listed at uh priority number two or three. And then uh not a general elective credits are all the way at the end. So as we shuffle through those, you know, the computer does a lot of the work for us, but coming out of that graduation watch list meeting, there will be certain kids that do get recommended and highly advised to take this as a support plan for them as we look at tier one and tier two interventions through our M T S program. So.
I think Barry did the question was, will counselors kind of encourage the right folks to sign up for it? And I'm sure they will.
Yeah, all of our counselors are on our graduation watch list group. Well, I went to special ed representative as well as one of our graduation coach group people, myself, Miss Noak, and um and and the representative from the alternative educational.
So I really appreciate this course. I think it's very valuable. Um, so just a couple of comments. One is have a little bit of concern about the name and whether it would carry a stigma with it and whether there's a more creative um and broad name for the course. It might encourage more people to take it and feel good about being a part of the class. Along with that, I wondered whether Mill Creek could consider this type of programming um as an elective also. And part of my thinking with that was, I mean, I know middle school kids are a different breed as well, but you know, if you the younger the kid, the sort of less stigma that comes with it. So if we and Dexter sort of normalize the addition of this type of electors to sort of pair with students with their coursework along the way, it wouldn't seem like coming out of nowhere or dropping someone in high school and thinking how we're going to also put you in this class. So I guess I I have concerns about stigma in terms of scheduling and naming. And I guess along with that, I'm thinking about what could be part of the class. I really, you know, like you mentioned, you know, for seniors who might be thinking about college, I really do think there's some broadening that could be done. And so maybe even, you know, in the future, if part one or part two, you know, maybe speed reading could be offered. Maybe there could be pieces that would attract different types of students again to reduce the stigma and really broaden the appeal of that type of class. Because I do, I think, like Dan said, this would be very valuable for a lot of, a lot of kids. So I think just being careful about how it looks in the report catalog.
Absolutely.
We do offer the early middle college, we do a soft skills boot camp over the summer that the kids that are doing their own middle college need to take, which might be something maybe we'll just kind of look at how that makes us, maybe there's something that.
And the good thing is, is we can, with your approval, we can change this name really up until we start having kids receive credit for it. Once they receive credit for it, once we change it, we actually have to create a whole nother section listed in our school because that erases it from every transcript ever, which we don't want to. That could be bad.
The next um class is computer science with design.
I like this class. I love this. It's pretty critical to offer. I was surprised picking up some electives for this option. There are almost no computer science options, and I'm former software developer. Computer science, you know, even in the eighties in high school, I had multiple computer classes, which is crazy that today computer will be in the class. So I would encourage making that more because it's practical.
Yeah, it's trying to hire staff because they make more money coding than teaching.
Yeah, that's true.
We have, Mr. Barrett has really taken an interest in this, and then we hired a um a young teacher last year, Matt Inch, who's a former software developer for General Motors who went into teaching math. So we kind of maybe hit the jackpot with that guy. So we're looking forward to expanding our computer support and support, Mr. Inch.
I I guess I would um, I agree with you, Brian. I had a lot of options, but listening to your presentation, you know, we had portrait, you know, there's the I'm dating myself, but but things didn't change as quickly. Things are changing so quickly now that my my feeling about this course is I think there's probably kids at school that could teach this course. And so how do we harness the energy and the passion around this current student body? Could there be some sort of self-led course or, you know, some sort of a mutually run course where where we're tapping into some of the expertise within our student body?
Right. I completely agree. And I think we're looking at using uh some of our students coming up in the future as our our little in-house geek squad as they will work underneath one of our people in uh in our tech department. Our our computer forward thinkers to be able to help work in our district and actually gain competency through that stuff too. Yeah, future money.
But then also with the, when we look at the integrated studies course, that would be integrated studies, maybe the avenue for those two kids that are really that advanced, that can be working on their own skills and developing something that can become modules or another course, which is where we get to that play space. We need a flexible, we needed a flexible shell to do some of these creative things because you're not going to have twenty-five kids that can do it, and we might have two or three.
I just wanted to throw a comment out there. I saw for that class, there was an optional um support package for the teacher that was an additional cost. And I guess I'd just like to say I would like to or encourage our district to spend the money on that so that the teacher has whatever support they need.
Prices are valid. That's that's paid by the school. All these costs are paid by the school, right?
Yeah, but I, if it's optional, I just wanted the school, I wanted the district to say this is valuable.
The good news is we have a reserve specifically to cover things like that. As I look at all the numbers, I don't see an issue with numbers on anything we're looking at here.
Okay, moving on to a mathematical approach to critical thinking, math.
I love this class.
So I I did not like math. I was not very good at math, but I took common sense math in college. It was the only time I got an A in math. So I went to bed and I was like, oh, this makes sense. It will, it it makes sense for kids to be still struggling with math.
Or there's, there are so many aspects in math that never get taught because in the U S we do algebra, geometry, algebra two. But you have this entire area of discrete mathematics that are actually applicable to life. So like, he's going to talk graph theory. So you look at why does UPS take left turns? It's it's a routing system that's actually based on a mathematical Hamiltonian or Euler circuits that's built into how you use a matrix and how you write the code for it. I it's really, and it's really tangible. It's all zeros, ones and twos. That you don't have to be a great algebra geometry student, but you could be a great spatial thinker and go, you learn this system and you can apply it all over the place.
Why math makes sense in life?
Yeah, the math they'll actually use.
Yeah.
I thought the class would be good for a context for why you're learning other areas of math. You can learn a mechanical thinking skill. I mean, some of those things in math where I learned in college, like gaming, you're incredibly advanced. I mean, it's the common stuff at high school. But thinking that's things that you learn from how to approach things, I think would make me think about algebra. Curious how many are going to sign up for it.
But aren't signing up for this at Shakespeare class.
The name's self-scarred.
Yeah, the first thing kids think of is who's teaching.
I also think that this is just a weird kind of area. If you definitely, because if it's an elective, it shouldn't be too hard, shouldn't be like homework like an extensive amount. But you have to kind of get in the point where it's not just like a rudimentary long class kind of a little math or a thing where people who took it because it's an elective are struggling because it's harder than it should be as an elective. So I think it's a cool idea, but it'll be a weird race race you're going to have to get into for decades.
I agree with you, Griffin.
There will be kids though.
Yeah, there will be kids.
That's what counselors ought to help it a great deal. Really look at it for kids' time to look for real valuable courses and see how they help.
As well as all the teachers that are proposing new courses, they are doing a pretty darn good job of marketing their courses. They're talking to their classes on the daily, so they're they're hopefully setting themselves up for success.
Okay, jazz band. My favorite comment and reading in this was from the kids was like, really? No mu, no uh, no homework? No musical homework? They don't believe it. So that's funny. What do you think? I'm going to go right to you.
Well, I think it's an interesting concept, and we do have a jazz band after school. It's like a normal one. And there is interest in it. If it's, our company only wants twenty, thirty people, we had a first district pool in there giving for to see a jazz band after school. And we had twenty, thirty people there today. So I think that getting the people there is not an issue. It's it's whether kind of keeping them in business is probably not because I mean, you don't know Dr. Moore's kind of these guys. Whether he takes it as a chill class of jazz band or not, or if he turns it into like another practice, do this, all this stressful stuff. So I think it could go very well or could go very wrong.
I have a couple of questions on this. Um, my son was really into jazz, so kind of fun to see this come along. The question I have is do they have to participate in marching band in order to take this course? Yeah, and um the the concept of a full year, uh, well, I appreciate the intent, and I think it's a good idea. I'm just wondering if it should potentially be a semester in the beginning. It's a full year course. I'm just wondering if it should be a semester course.
So it has been presented as an A and B course, a a full year course, but I will allow, I will take it with Dr. Moore, see about the marching band requirement.
There there is not, there is not a marching band requirement. It says, and I, no, there's not. And I I don't think there should be a marching band requirement. If so many kids, you got, right, under sixty-two kids in the marching band and all these symphonies and these things, but there are the kids that don't want to be in the marching band. They play the zonero, practice on their own, and it's a good way to get into music theory and stuff like that if they're not doing it outside someplace else. The prerequisite does not say marching band. It's uh audition and.
Yeah, realistically, if you run a jazz band, you need a bass player, guitarist. They're not in the marching band already.
Yeah, that's that's part of what I was talking about where it becomes an issue of if Dr. Moore makes it that. Because we have people, we have orchestra students in the marching band. He, they do color garbage, just the the flags. So knowing Dr. Moore, if it becomes an issue of he's, you're in this class, you're in it for a year long, and suddenly hits you with the take a flag, you have to do marching band, then it could become a nightmare for some kids.
If we're, if he's doing that, that's going to stop. I mean, I don't know. You just prop something up. I don't know. You I'll let you figure that out. You figure that out, but if what he says is true, that's going to stop. So this shouldn't be, shouldn't be forced to join a club to be in a class.
I'm sure you can get that cleared up before we have a vote.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I have a few more comments on this one, actually. Um, I was a sitter player who took jazz improv in high school, and I kind of broke the class. And so because they weren't expecting someone to bring instruments to play. So I guess that's what I'm wondering too. It's, I had to hear you mention guitar, but what if we have orchestra members? When I see jazz band as the title, I'm thinking saxophone, I'm thinking trumpets, I'm thinking, you know, jazz band. And so I guess I'm wondering the intention and if, I don't have Dr. Moore at all, um, but if his intention is to keep it to band instruments or if this is more of a jazz-focused class that has the potential to invite anyone in who wants to. Because I, there are a lot of instruments who would play. And if it's not an issue this year, one day in the future it will be. Yeah, you don't have to have an answer. I just.
Yeah, when I spoke, it sounded pretty broad, but we'll circle that.
Yeah, I can tell you someone showing up with violin really does, if you're not prepared for it. So that's why I'd like the school to be thoughtful in the beginning about what is the intention and what kinds of things will be learned. It does specifically say, you know, less focus on performance. So if the intention is to just teach jazz, teach music theory, teach improvisation, it really shouldn't matter what instrument people show up with. But I also did miss the prerequisite saying by audition or permission of instructor. So maybe some clarification would be helpful.
Adding on to that, I think, yeah, if it's by audition or permission of instructor, if a student is really interested in maybe music theory or if they just got an interest in it and they don't have a mastery of an instrument that's normally in jazz band, what if they, if someone with like a real passion for maybe a freshman saxophone or something is being beat out by just seniors because they're just simply better musicians, then I think that also becomes an issue. It's a club kind of for a reason because people can take it up if they want to. Once you make it a by audition thing, then it becomes a, becomes a little more competitive, which might cause problems.
I like I like their first column. I think their, where the teacher has got, has too much, too much selection. I mean, I don't know. It's just, it's one of those I like it. I've seen a lot of jazz bands at schools. They've been offshoots of the traditional bands. They're all clubs, but clubs with credits, but everyone's just standing. Best students perform in it. It's hot. This, I get why you want people to audition, but it's it's concerted.
Many high schools have jazz bands. This is the first district I've worked in that did not have a high school jazz band class. It's pretty common to have a class, de-selecting. Those are pretty common, what they do. They want a kid that they they have to figure out, because if you end up with six guitarists and no drummer, you have to figure out how you're going to make music. So they, I think that's part of this concept. You just got to make sure you have enough of the different instruments. And you might have a good, I've seen jazz band classes where they have a kid that's never really played guitar, but they teach him one chord to play over and over and over, and then they start expanding. So audition helps to figure out what you're going to, how you're going to piece it together and actually make a song.
I will say though too that I I do know students who've been professional in the music who don't, you know, want to do typical band class. They're really into jazz. They've actually left the district in order to do that. They want.
They're really into jazz, they've actually left the district in order to do that, they want to help. So I think that this is a really nice option. And I also, you know, having it just be a club, that's a lot of curricular, you know, instruction time. And I don't know why you can still have a jazz club after school if you wanted to. I don't know.
So I guess I read this as an elective. So I guess I just, a better framework for me than would be helpful. Because you're right, if it is a jazz band and you're trying to have a jazz band class, then a full year makes sense, audition makes sense, balancing instruments, understand all that. I guess I was reading this as an elective, so I was thinking, so anyone who's interested in jazz, who wants to learn, who wants to explore. And to me, like Jennifer said, that makes more sense as a half year class. So I guess more information would help me better understand that.
I agree with that. I was confused. I was not confused when I read it, but my understanding was apparently correct. So I, I have no musical ability whatsoever. This would have been an interesting class for me, learning music theory. Give me the guitar and I can play one chord. To have a class, an elective class for credit, where you have to try out for it, to me, might be normal in a band. But I'm a musician, so it just sounds really weird. It seems like it should be open to anybody that wants to learn jazz music theories.
All right, I'll try this more.
Great, talk to more. Any other discussion or questions? Move on to integrated studies.
I understand this was an externship, right? That's for the kids who are externship from students essentially, like a bridge?
Yeah, for some. It creates the, because right now, we don't have a course that if we wanted to do some kind of personalized place-based project, we can't put them in geometry. We need a place to put them to create some unique experiences. So for example, for example, if we want, what would be great is to offer, there are opportunities to learn English, social studies, some science and integrate. But we don't have a way to do it. This gives us a way, gives us a way to do some of those extended learning opportunities. It might be like ten or twenty hours worth, they're not an entire semester worth. It gives us a shell to be fairly creative within. That I don't anticipate is gonna be a whole hundred kids in it. It's gonna be a section or two that I'll work from there. But it gives us a shell, like we run into, some of the applications I see is we have kids that would love to get a CNA. That's twenty hours. So what do we do with them the rest of the course? So maybe we, they can knock out an English or a math credit or a science credit in another method and get their CNA and we can piece it together. We could get kids that might be into coding and we can create a way for them to get their math credit and create coding modules that could be used with other kids. But you can't have a kid be the teacher, but you could if the kid was creating as part of a course, modules that then were reviewed by a teacher that understood coding and then put into practice. It's gonna be a really unique kind of niche. But it'll offer opportunities to kids that really want to follow some kind of fashion project to do that.
It's not necessarily outside of the community, but that could be a problem. Oh, got it, okay.
This was just, I see it a lot of ways. Is this available to? Not just kids who work in school, but non-traditional, you know, what they are, what they, you know, craftsmen, what it belongs. Is there a pathway for kids to that too? And all for the SWCC?
Generally, you have to have SWCC, but we could probably do. What we envision is, so one of my first, actually not one of my first, my first teaching job was to help kids get math credit at a tech center. So in building trades, we would work on geometry credit. There's a way to do geometry credit in the building trades. Without needing an entire geometry class and an entire two hours per day of building trades, there might be some builder we could team up with. And they have some core content that we're working in at another model that, and then maybe there's some science pieces that we're trying to piece together. And as we look, we use, we use technology in so many unique ways now to attract credit or to attract credit, to show, demonstrate competency and demonstrate mastery. It would be intertwining some of those methods with real place-based experiences. So if we could find a builder and they're working on something, but they're actually showing competency and they're getting mathematics in that way with a math teacher that's part of the integrated studies group. There's, it gives us a shell to be pretty creative. Oh, no, Molly's our executive director of strategic initiatives and David Teddy's gonna be the high school assistant principal. We were, he was working on, or interim assistant, sorry. So we were, we were working on these extended learning opportunities before some of the changes. And this was one of the avenues to get the extended learning opportunities in place. So I know Molly was working on one with tools. The, what's it over? Yep, so they were working on one with Stanley Blacken decker. Out on here on River Drive, or at Ziv and here on River Avenue. But we don't have a way to do that during the school day unless we can build a class that the kids in that we actually tie it together with core content.
I like that, yeah.
And then the last one is Mandarin language introduction.
We've had kids take Mandarin up through, they're in sixth grade right now. It's logical to offer them the option. If they continue to want to take it, then we'll continue to work on it. If not, then we keep offering French and Spanish.
This is one thing I was happy to see because I know that we do have those kids that are coming up and are ready to, you know, move on or not. So then I also thought, because it's an introduction, maybe the kids that didn't get to have an introduction to a book, it could be interesting to them.
Exactly, it gives it options.
What's great currently about jazz band?
Fifth and sixth have had it all the way up. Third or? Second, second grade. First and second is fifth and sixth now. Current first and second, current fifth and sixth. I need to look, because every year we have to remember where they are. The pandemic really threw off my tracking.
That's actually where I learned a little bit of Mandarin.
If there's enough interest to go with the continued, maybe like high school level course.
If kids do take it in the middle school, then I anticipate they get a proposal for it to move to the high school and those kids will go. The next, the next logical step, see if they even want to take it in middle school.
Now, there's discussion. Any more discussion? Okay, we, I would just, I would, what would help me to see would be just an executive summary, so it's rich, which would be listing a lot of courses. You know, how many semesters, what their qualifying credit, you know, is there an English map or whatever? And then the cost, wouldn't that be really helpful to see? Thank you. Moving on to our second opportunity for public participation. Each speaker is allotted a maximum of three minutes, virtual fifteen minutes unless otherwise notified. At this point, the meeting those interested in making public comments will be asked to raise their hand so that time may be tied equally. Each speaker will be asked to announce their name and to indicate who they represent, any organization or agency. No person may speak more than once on the same subject during a single meeting. So if you spoke at the first public comment area, you would have, if you wanted to speak again, it would be on a different subject. Those wishing to receive a personal response from the board or superintendent must complete a public comment form available at the meeting address on our website. Can I just, I should put a couple up there, I just wondered if, oh, there she is. You just care that it's behind somebody. Is there anybody who would like to comment? Holly, were you just filling out the form?
I was just doing, I was just earlier.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fraser? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh, I just saw the gray, my bad, Holly.
It's all right, I have a gift in it.
You're hiding gifts there.
I'm on my flashlight.
I don't hide anything, sorry.
I'm Holly Gruber, I am a parent. I actually had no time to speak tonight, I just came actually on a information seeking mission. But I, I was actually pushed to talk tonight.
Could you put on the microphone?
I'm Holly Gruber, I'm a parent. I would, did not plan on speaking tonight. I was just moved to speak after I heard something. The first thing that I would like, or my subject goes back to the school security. Please excuse me if I ramble a little bit, I'll try to be as concise as I can. The first thing I would like to address is I was very dismayed. And what moved me to talk was a racing heart with the, what I felt as a parent of children in Dexter School District. What, the lack of sympathy that I felt from our superintendent. It really, I'm still kind of a little bit shaken right now. I would think that, you know, basically, there'd be immense amount of sympathy for any parent who thought their child was on the list regardless of how true or untrue would be. So the almost disdain, ugliness, anger that was displayed back toward the, the public comment was very upsetting. One of the things that was brought up was about passing by Mr. Aubrey, was passing info amongst ourselves. Agree, we all had a great time getting words. But at times, there's usually a grain of truth somewhere. And when there's absolutely no information, that is where we find information. As former military yourself, we both know there's some, usually some truth in there. And there is a little bit of brain of truth and that's the only way we can find it, when our sources don't give us any information. Next thing is, I was kind of dismayed when I actually heard the information that only our administrators and our liaison was involved in the investigation. So I personally reached out to law enforcement, more than one agency, and they told me there was no way that a school could or should have handled that type of issue. And the last thing is, maybe we need to make sure we are having some domestic terrorism training, school shooting training, investigation going on. I know we have, from what it sounded like, we have it going on, we're making sure we're getting our liaison, let's don't stop it, please.
Anybody else wish to comment? Okay, we'll move on to board comments, which starts off with the EFD update. So that's me, as the EFD liaison. And I know that last time I spoke about the Dexter Chelsea at the, at Foundation Rival rematch. It's exciting to report that we raised over twenty-one thousand dollars for the Dexter EFD. Because of the communities where EFD was able to fund it, over thirty-four thousand dollars in quality grants. Which it's so great that the support goes right back to the Dexter students. So some exciting teacher grants that were funded are digital cameras for DHS photography class, horse therapy for students from MC, from Miltree. Periodicals, magazines, subscriptions for the Wiley library and new reading intervention books for Anchor and Beacon. So you can see that all the grants went through throughout the districts. And if you are interested in a full list of grants, efddexter.org is the website for EFD. And then when you talk about the MASB assembly, I'm gonna go review Jennifer.
So as Mara mentioned, we went, I can't remember the date of ours, but it was November eleventh through the fourteenth. It was the MASB annual leadership conference. And there were hundreds of board representatives throughout the state within Grand Rapids. Some of the boards had multiple representations, you know, like the whole board was there. Some of the boards had one or two people. So I, I found it extremely helpful, there was a lot of training, it was a very full day. We started seven-thirty in the morning for breakfast and we had full presentations throughout the day. And then I ended, I think Molly did too, with training from six to nine PM. And so we do this all day, but just so helpful to be with other board members facing the same sorts of challenges and issues throughout the state of Michigan. We had speakers, a lot of it was about how to overcome adversity and just continue on. So things that we're all talking about today, fortunately, with how the struggles in our, in our life. But it was very rejuvenating and it brought us back to the purpose of what we're doing, which is trying to, you know, make sure that our children have the best education, that we're providing the policies, we're making sound decisions, we're using data, lots of different. So it was great. I encourage everybody to go next time, I knew Tuesday was a great look. But the other thing that we did was, there were vendors and of course, you know, lots, lots of vendors there. There were seminars, there were breakout sessions, it wasn't even, it was a presentation of vendors. And like any probably conference if anybody has got to. But one of them was about green energy and I would like to make a later comment. So it was good. What about you? The, not the edge?
Well, I, yes, I was gonna go into the board, the board here. So, hold on. So I, yeah, it was good, it was good. I, I agree, I always come away from MASB conferences with a sense of renewal and and it's great to be able to talk to other board members and share. Usually in the past, before COVID, it was, you know, they were different, but we're all dealing with the same things together. So we, as I was in the legislative, or I was a delegate, I just wanted to update you on the voting. And I'll go really quick. The continuing resolutions, the general resolutions all passed, there were two that were pulled out. And that was the clinical diseases and the homeschooling. And that's where we discussed a little bit more on the outside that they carry. And everything else carried with the exception of, actually, sorry, with a couple of methods. A six, X five, which was talking about public school academies, which is how the state defines them now, but they're really just charter schools. So we wanted to acknowledge that public school academies is just covered for charter schools. So we wanted to make sure that that was out there, especially because it makes it sound like it's real pretty and it's just a charter school. So, and that was basically it. It was, it was really interesting. There were a hundred and fifty districts and three, five counties that were represented in that room. So for the delegate assembly, so that was really exciting. And we had a lot of resolutions to go over, of course, because we skipped last year. So one of the resolutions that was passed was that we could do it in person and virtual. So that was a really important resolution that was, that was passed. Which I know you all did, did your research and your homework and read all of them. So I'm just reiterating what we all know. That was this. Anybody else have any comments?
I want to come back on the SWCC. I went to it Friday night. I think maybe it's, let's speak to Holly, maybe you're the way to speak to about it. Or you're talking to you about it. Kind of. Just in general, sort of very fully, trying to find information, trying to get stuff. It was very interesting, but if you're a parent going for the first time, where do you go? And you see Big Book in class, you see the video class, and the rest is kind of out there. When you talk to the students who are involved, you can find which ones are involved. They actually provided both information outside of the students, it was really, it was, I don't know, I mean, I, I found it kind of. I found it interesting, why didn't you find the right student who was involved in class and how?
Well, I find my student who was involved in class and how, how it impacted them, what they're doing for it. And I don't know if we're promoting it the right way. And I don't, I can't speak to that. I don't really know. I speak to my own kids. When I ask them about if they wanna, they said, oh, we wanna do that. Do you want instruction or not? There's so many different areas. I was talking to one young lady, she's going BOPA. And she's in this, she's sort of, I think a lot of it has to do with the total, majority of the classes are in Saline. So it's, you know, you can't go in there and see it. I think Saline students, just talking to some of them, use a lot more than, than we, we change or not. But there's so many courses over there that, more than they showed that night. But it's, and I don't know how to get that. One, get them to advertise better. Two, how do we show it? I mean, not show it, but how do we get the students, might be, is going to show off to see the difference, different things. And then it definitely actually provides a better.
I have two comments. The first one is, I think this is our first regular board meeting since the state of the district. So I just wanted to thank Dr. Kimmis for all the work that he and his whole team did putting that together. Uh, and for community members who weren't able to see it live, I really did want to encourage everyone to go back. And I did find it on the district website under district and superintendent, and the slides are there. I believe the video is there, is there also. And I just, I feel like, you know, I continue to learn new things about what's available in the district. And so I really want to encourage all parents to continue attending state with the district and to watch it now. So that you just know what is available for your kids in the future. I just think it's really valuable. Um, and then secondly, I know we have some marching band shout outs this fall. So I wanted to say a quick shout out to the Mill Creek Orchestra who performed last Thursday at CPA. And because of COVID, this year's seventh graders, um, this was their first performance, um, their first concert. So they were in fifth grade when the pandemic started. So I wanted to thank everyone involved in the orchestra program and congratulate the middle school kids for a phenomenal one.
So I just had a couple of suggestions or maybe comments about alternative, uh, alternative energy and pursuits of solar power and those types of things. I know we talked about implementing some, some alternative energy strategies, et cetera. But it would be really nice to see that move forward or get an update on how that's going at some point. Also implementing some, you know, stormwater management, additional stormwater management, like curried surfaces and different, um, things like that. I know we haven't had a, the facilities getting it allows, maybe that's the place to talk about that. I don't know. I do want to acknowledge the extreme anxiety and fear that has been expressed tonight by some, some community members that has been felt throughout the district and throughout the state this, this last week. So I'll say that, sorry. And.
Thank you.
I also want to thank Dr. Tewitts, because I know it may seem that you have some fear, but we need here. I'm pretty sure for hundreds, we hear regular updates and the amount of, um, challenge that we deal with, that you deal with daily. I really appreciate the care that you give. Sorry, I don't need that. Thank you. Don't apologize for showing any more show. I'm all there. I appreciate it. Anyone else have anything more to add? I don't wanna rush anybody. Um, I'll move on to information items, which are the board bulletin. Thank you. And then I started with, we do not have a closed session. So I will move on to M, which is adjournment. Well, for coming.